Call the Clean City Commission meeting of September 19th to order. Bambero Hall, please.
Chairperson Russell.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Ferry is excused. Commissioner Bowman.
Present.
Commissioner Garcia is absent. Commissioner Hollins is excused. Commissioner Sowea.
Here.
Commissioner Bonacori. Here, we have a quorum.
Would you all rise and join me in the pledge to our nation's flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item one. Approval of minutes. Consideration of minutes for approving consideration for the August 15th, 2019 regular meeting minutes for approved as written or with noted corrections. Does everybody have a chance to read the minutes? And if so, are there any corrections or omissions?
I have no additions or corrections.
I don't either.
Do you retain a motion that we accept the minutes as written?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of August 15th.
I second that.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed. Okay. Motion carried. Consideration of public comments. Those wishing to address the Clean City Commission need not request permission in advance action. Taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter and reschedule the matter for consideration at this end discussion at a later time pursuant to ARS 38F 431. Anybody want to address the Clean City Commission?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Tina. We know who you are, but give your name anyway.
Thank you. I'm Nina Brackett. I'm a volunteer, community volunteer, and I'm here because of the some PSA that I heard at the Mojave County Fair, and I just wanted to address and maybe make some suggestion. So I know that the City of Kingsman and the Clean City Commission have relocated the recycling picker to the Public Works Department, and I think it's a wonderful idea because we need to have a more clean collection to make the recycle work for our season. However, I think there was some confusion, and I'm not sure where it come from, but during the fair when I was just entering at the fair on behalf of my children and myself, and I was talking to some very well-educated ladies, and there was a misconception. I usually have my children use reusable water bottle. They are telling me that the City of Kingsman recycling yard only take plastic number one water bottle, nothing else. And my question is, what about Gatorade bottle? It's clear, it's number one. And I make a point, I drop off my recycling on Monday, September 16th. I talked to the Public Works crew, and he explained the whole thing for me. The newspaper in the guy was very.
Nina, I'm sorry. I'm having a very difficult time.
Okay, try.
Hearing you.
All right. So I am here on behalf of the recycling yard. There were conversation at the county fair that the city only accept plastic number one water bottle. My children usually use reusable water bottle, but occasionally for sport event, we do buy Gatorade bottle. What I'm saying is that I know the location of the recycling has changed, however, there's some change with the content of the what's accept, what's not accept, and there's some very misconception in the community. I would encourage that there be more public media, more communication, maybe just a simple flyer illustrating what is permissible, not permissible. It would be very helpful maybe send out to the city website, Facebook, local media, newspaper, or when we're going to the school for the recycling contest. Because I know that not everyone buy water bottle. The lady that I spoke with at the county fairground was saying that, no, 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 I went to the site, I went to the yard, they only take number one water bottle. And I'm saying, do I have to stop buying this Gatorade bottle for my children? So there's some misconception out there right now. So I would encourage more communication, maybe just a simple flyer, clarify what it is, and then have that flyer sent out to all the community center, or maybe the commissioner would go to the public and, you know, go to Route 66, Rowery, the Ellis Club, the Subette Garden Club, and be the guest picker, talk to them. So that's lady number one. It is say number one, and it is accept that I spoke with Donna on that, but the lady assured me, and she's very well-educated, she's like, no, only this one. I was like, okay. So that was only my comment, is that there's definitely a lot of confusion out there.
Unfortunately, not allowed to discuss this during public comments. However, later in the agenda, we will be talking about the county fair. And if you want to stick around, we might be able to clarify.
I will.
Some of that for you.
Thanks, Eric.
Super. Anyone else like a?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I received some correspondence today from someone who wasn't going to be able to attend the meeting, so I just thought I would read it into the record. And, you know, if you would like to, you can refer the staff to follow up with this person. But this is a report from Barbara Kuzma, and I'm just going to read it to you. She said, I've been noticing small alcohol bottles discarded along our road sides. This means that the consumer is probably drinking while driving, but also littering. These bottles are small, but they can accumulate to become a real trash problem. On September 12th, I decided to see how many of these sample-sized bottles were showing up in our neighborhood and while at my foothills estates. I walked Cheyenne Road from Seneca to Blackfoot, which I guessed made to be a little over half a mile. I picked up all the bottles I could find on both sides of the street. Majority of the bottles were on the south side of the street, which could probably be from the people driving into the subdivision as in returning from work than those exiting the subdivision. Number of bottles I found were 45 three-alive vodka bottles, 19 Fireball whiskey bottles, four Sky bottles, and five miscellaneous. Almost all the bottles had two caps screwed back on as the consumer did not want to litter their own vehicle or have questionable evidence of their behavior. I would like to see the commission take action protesting the availability of these sample-sized alcohol bottles. We don't need people drinking while they are driving, and we don't need their trash at the sides of our roads either. Like I said, she was not able to attend, so I just wanted to read that into the record for her, and please feel free to refer that back to me, and I'll follow up.
Thank you. Did you name, or did you?
Hi, I'm Teresa Woods. I just wanted to comment in response to the first lady that spoke. I was at the fair as well, saw the booth that you guys had, and it has a little two-sided tri-fold brochure I paid. It stated number one, number two, what was number two. I think that's really great. I am still blurry, kind of behind and coloration. I like, so I just say that brochure was very helpful. I love this place posted. I thought it was very adequate to see. Yes. Visual carry. So I didn't cross any water bottles exist, but I thought the highlight was very. Remember. It was a body. I can see some touch.
Thank you. Move down to item three, reports. Clean City Commission orientation. Have a person here. Ah, you're going to do our orientation.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, this is the first time we've had a full commission in over a year, so we thought it was a good time to do an orientation. But again, one of our new commissioners isn't here tonight, so I don't know if you would rather table this item until we had all of our commissioners here.
I think that'd be reasonable. Do Commissioner Hollins be back next month? I think we need to take the vote on that. Motion, do we table this?
I make a motion to table it. Effective 1st of August.
Motion made?
Aye.
Motion made and seconded. Do we table this discussion until next month? Any further discussion? All in favor, if I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Easy Recycling Drop Program Report. Easy Community Recycling Drop Program Report after operational changes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I don't know. Again, this was requested by Commissioner Hollins, who isn't here this month, but we go ahead and go through it. We did a presentation to council Tuesday night. That's available on the city's website. I can email that out to everybody, so you have access to that. We just kind of did an update on the program. Again, effective July 1, we made changes to the program. We consolidated the seven drop sites to one drop site at Public Works. We established hours there. We have, it's a managed location, so there's someone on staff to assist people with sorting their recyclables and educating them on what is, what we do and what we do not accept. We had to make some changes to the commodities that we accept based upon the markets that we need, that we have available to us for those commodities. So some of those changes have allowed us to utilize local markets more. We're just now starting to see some of the benefits of that. But I'll go back at just the overview. So we're open seven days a week, Monday through Friday, 7 to 3:30 p.m., Saturday and Sunday, 7 until noon. Like I say, we do have a team member on site to help educate the public, and so far, our contamination rate has dropped from 47% to less than 10%. We've been asking people as they come, people that are comfortable sharing with us, whether they reside and say limits are outside. Feedback we're getting that now about 60% of the people that are using our program are city residents. So again, we're accepting cardboard, number one, and number two plastics, aluminum tin, steel recyclables. Those are all recycled locally, which reduces the number of trips that we're taking up to Las Vegas. Glass, e-waste, newspaper, shredded paper, and chipboard are still transported to Las Vegas, but we were able to find a third-party vendor to do that trucking for us, which is saving us about $200 per load. They're able to haul double loads. So the quantity has improved a lot, and the, this is just an example from July, because it took us a while to establish with our vendors the quality of the project we were going to be getting. So in July, we held 9.7 tons of cardboard to the local vendor, and there was no charge to us. There was no tipping fee to us for that cardboard paper. Typically, when we were running those up to Las Vegas, we were spending about $3,000 a month on that. Also in July, we took two tons of number one, number two plastics to our local vendor. We were actually paid, for the first time in many years, $40. We got an invoice today for another load that was at $90, so.
Ninety zero, you said?
Nine zero.
Okay.
So kind of as some of the previous comments, you know, public education continues to be the primary focus. At the council meeting, I acknowledged the commission's role in that and the fact that when we're attending these special events on a regular basis, you know, to me, that's the best kind of public outreach we're doing, because we're actually talking to people. We've got our displays, they can see what we take and what we can't take. I think that's just going to be a continuing effort. We talked to a lot of people at the fair who weren't aware of the changes, despite a lot of the effort that we've made between Facebook, stories in the newspaper, stories on the radio, websites. There's just, to me, that's the best way to reach, actually be out there in the field with them, be able to explain it to them, and be able to show it to them. So I think that's just going to be a continuing part of the program change. And again, and this is kind of what I told council, too, this is going to be a, this program's going to have to continue to evolve, and that's going to depend on, you know, what markets we have available to us, what we can do to improve our contamination rates, what we can do to reduce our transportation costs. Unfortunately, we don't have a material recovery facility in our area, so, yeah. So to minimize those trips to Las Vegas, we may need to restrict commodities received to what we can, what can be used here, what local vendors will take, accept from us here. Again, the rationale or the reasoning behind the changes, number one was to reduce contamination, and we're doing that through the increased public education that we're doing both at our facility, but and at these special events. And we were able to open up a new local market for a material that we previously had to take up to Vegas because it was too dirty for our local vendor. Now it's clean enough that we can dispose of it here and actually earn money for those commodities. Reducing the commodity tipping fees. Again, no charge for cardboard in July, and we're receiving money for plastics for the first time. You know, hopefully that trend continue. And just, I think, utilizing the local vendors and reducing the trip to Las Vegas is a big part of that. Again, some of the other issues that we had with the other drop sites were, you know, bulk waste that would get dropped off at the drop sites, or just regular trash that was getting mixed in with the other commodity. That's kind of the update, I guess. The average tonnage for the first two months has been 20 tons, which is a reduction from what we took in under the old program. But again, what we took in under the old program, nearly half of it was trash that was thrown away. I can try to answer any questions from my head.
May I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
I thought your Tuesday presentation at the city council was excellent.
Thank you.
My question. The electronics bin has been moved, it's in the back now?
Yes.
With all the rest of the bins?
Yes.
I'm curious, who buys that sort of thing?
Well, that's transported up to Las Vegas.
It is, okay.
And it depends on what's in there. Ed, correct me if I'm wrong, but generally, we have to pay to dispose of monitors, computer monitors, or TV. So it really depends what's in the load as far as what we pay, what we, I don't know that we've ever gotten, have we earned anything on the whole load of e-waste?
No, we haven't earned anything, but we've been blessed that we haven't had to pay probably the last six times that we've went up there. We just ran up there last week, and they got enough good material to offset the bad material. So, you know, the key thing is, is that all that e-waste is going to an e-waste provider that's going to get rid of it properly.
Well, I've noticed out in the desert, we see less old TVs being used for garbage back as what it used to be, so it's working.
I have a question with the e-waste. Are you able to ask people, because it just occurred to me when you're doing this, ask people if it's dead and broken, or if it's just that they've upgraded and they no longer need it? Because we could also donate it to Goodwill, and then Goodwill makes money, and it doesn't end up in the landfill.
They can't sell it. They can't give them more.
They sell us, they're in there. Oh, not old TVs, but I mean monitors. They have monitors and old TVs there.
I've checked with Saint Dave's, they can't even sell TVs, or their company.
Oh, okay. I just, I've seen them there, so I thought, hey, if it still works, then somebody wants it.
Anything else? Thank you. Okay, item C. Mojave County Fair Report. Report regarding the Clean City Commission booth and the Mojave County Fair for those who attended it and or manned the booth. Who's your?
Somebody.
Yeah.
Nikki. I think it was good. We got a lot of, you know, a lot of contact with the public and a lot of chance to answer questions. And what occurred to me, and I haven't, you know, had a chance to talk, but like to Colleen, you know, having the videos that answer what are some of those basic questions that people ask over and over and over again. I know that there have been a lot of videos made, and they're out on YouTube, and, you know, I just need to look through and say, did they cover these questions that we got at the fair that we still are answering, you know? Do we need the video for that and then promote it more? No, and I think it was good.
I did, too. I enjoyed it. I had good response.
I would like to thank Public Works and Department of Sanitation for all their help. And there's no way I would have been able to lift those things up onto that table. It took two really strong guys to get those up on that stable. The little handouts that we had, I think worked really well this year. The maps that, what am I going to say?
Jersey.
Oh, I'm trying to remember the other, I can't remember the name of that commission or not commission, but the Board of Commerce, my gosh, I can never remember that name. They gave us a whole carton of city street maps, and between the street maps and the little post-it notes that the Economic Development Commission gave us, they were nice to attract people to the booth, and then we could talk to them. Otherwise, it's just another city booth, and they'd walk by it. But the two standards with what we will accept and what we won't accept got a lot of attention. I'm really happy with that. It did answer a lot of questions, and those that were willing to pick up printed material and read it, I think, will understand a little better now why we do what we do. But we've still got to just keep punching away at it and keep doing what we've been doing in the past. I think our selection of giveaways this year was pretty good. We didn't spend a whole lot of money, and we still have a lot of stuff, the stuff that we had to buy left over for future booth activity. My only comment was, and I don't know whether it's even possible or not, is we needed more space. That was the big one.
I wasn't sure if we needed more space, or we just had too much stuff, so I don't.
That's it. That was what we were trying to figure out. Did we try and get too much into the little booth, or did we want to try to keep doing what we were doing and get more space? I don't even know if the fairgrounds has it, because a lot of people are already signed up for next year, so there can't be space for us to do whatever we put. I thought it looked really well.
I think we ought to do it again next year, but I wish we could get other commissioners to join us. The other, like carton, you know? Yeah, the other commissioners. The other commissioners.
Yeah.
Join us as far as the cost of the booth, I think that would certainly help.
Well, that's true, too.
About what they do.
You know, just making people aware of what they do.
When we had four people in the booth, it was starting to get crowded.
Oh, I don't doubt it.
And that was my concern. And I think we should have at least one Clean City Commission person in the booth, because that's what we're there for, to answer questions about the recycling program and what we're trying to do. However, it would be nice to have a commission from some of the other once in a while and every two questions. Especially Parks and Rec. And you can economic development.
Yeah.
A lot of questions on that. They were, with the banner that used to hang in the back of this room, hanging at the booth, we got a lot of questions on the I-40 or I-11 of, in corridor. A lot of comments on that, but some were really, really pretty good. So anyway. Anything, I know you're real new in this.
I missed out, I missed out, so.
Yeah. But yeah, I think, I think we just have to kind of figure out what we can do and how to arrange our booth a little bit better. Yeah, I think it was better this year than it was in the past, so.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Anything else?
I would like to make a motion that we do it again next year.
Motion's been made?
I second that.
Seconded. Any further discussion?
Oh, I just, we still got the names, right? I do like the way that we did our raffle this time, that we collected names and phone numbers, so that we can go and ask them to friend us on Facebook instead of just giving away, and, you know, we didn't have any further contact.
Right, right. As long as we're discussing, did the winners come down and collect their prizes?
I believe they were notified today.
We had a few people pick up stuff and were really excited.
Well, good, good, good.
Mr. Chairman, just a clarification, this isn't an action item, it's just a report.
I'm sorry.
So this isn't an action item?
Oh, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Then that's.
I'm sorry.
We will retract the motion in a second. All right.
Do you have no question? We already know action. Thanks. Here.
It'll be in the second week of September, probably.
It's always the second week.
Yeah.
Probably, but maybe not for the whole time.
All right, we'll move on to old business. Day of Caring. Day of Caring, Citywide Cleanup. Further discussion and possible action regarding last-minute preparations for the annual Day of Caring Citywide Cleanup to be held on Saturday, September 21st, 2019. Maria Gonzalez has got everything pretty well under control. Those that have signed up, we've got their cleanup areas set, and we will start handing out the bags from sanitation department tomorrow. The people start coming in probably around noon, maybe as early as 10 o'clock to pick up their bags and their area that they'll be handing out. I think it's all set. It's a busy, busy weekend. We've got a whole bunch of things going on this weekend. I did see Public Works knocking down the weeds in the Amity Divine in the middle, especially there at the airway. Those of the commission that can make it. Kathy Bowman is going to be working with Maria at the bank, so she'll be helping give up bags Saturday morning and get people in their direction, and maybe even registering people.
Friday and Saturday.
Any questions?
No questions.
Mr. Chairman, just maybe a clarification that the breakfast starts at 6:00. As far as the actual work out in front of Bash's, we'll be there at 7:00.
It'll probably be a little bit after 6:00 when the breakfast gets started. From what I understand, they're going to start setting up the tents and bringing their food in at 6:00 o'clock, and. six o'clock and it'll probably be quite round.
I won't be at Bash's till seven, so.
Yeah.
And hopefully the wind dies so we don't have to clean up. Stuff is blowing in faster than we can pick it up. Let's see, what else can we... I talked with a fellow that is handling the Country Western Music Festival in Molecotive Park. He's the promoter. And I mentioned that we were having our cleanup on Saturday and we would not have anybody there Sunday. And if the wind does blow, it's gonna blow a lot of the things from the vendors and the booth, booths over across the fence across the street. Would it be possible for him to put a crew over there with their finished cleanup up? No problem. Courtney and Mike Mearsman, they are a very good group. They take care of all of us. But I guess everything is pretty much scheduled and ready to go. Any further questions on that? If not, we can move on to item 4B. Queen City Commission shirts. Discussion and possible action regarding updating the Queen City Commission shirts to include a new safety feature. Again, on this, do we want to discuss this now with the four of us here? Do we want to wait until we have full commission next month?
It might be a better idea.
Yeah.
To table it. Are we in a hurry?
No, ma'am.
With this subject? Okay.
No.
Okay.
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we take what?
I second.
Do we continue this for next month? I'll second it. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, voting carried. Item five, new business. American Recycle Poster and Essay Contest. Discussion and possible action regarding the Queen City Commission sponsoring and sponsoring the American Recycle Poster and Essay Contest.
I'll be there shortly.
But, but in here it says it's November or February. Do, do we have enough time to get it in November like we did last year rather than take it to February?
Nina is going to volunteer for us again if that helps.
Okay. I was kind of misled by this one statement.
What?
Oh, create a schedule of events for the contest if it is held November, in November. So she won't help us if it's in February?
She didn't say that.
It was moved last year because of my oversight. That was right after we took over the commission.
Right, oh, right, right, right.
We missed the deadline as far as getting that on. I don't, Nina, were you gonna speak for this one or?
What?
Yeah, all of a sudden, that's the first time that's ever happened, I think.
Yeah. Again, this is Nina Brackett. I'm a community volunteer. I'm here talking about the school recycling poster essay contest. We have been running it for five or six years. It's been a very successful outreach education to young students. And I always start with young children because they are so curious. And if we can reach to them for a recycle contest, I think we'll have a successful message to Queen City Commission. So the timeline that you see there in your package is looking backward to your next November 21st meeting day. That would be your award day. So after today's decision, if you are to move forward for the November, to set November 21st as your award day, then I will submit your information and the contest package to all the school superintendent, principal, and previous teacher who have been participating. Those that we have emailed out. And because we hoping that the school superintendent and other principal who have now changed will also forward to their staff member accordingly. And then definitely then I will need help from the commissioner, yourself, to judging it. The deadline is pretty much just collecting it about November 5th. Again, I will go to all the school and they know the procedure very well for the last five, six years. The teacher will take the package to their school office and I just pick it up off on the school office, front desk. I don't have to go to individual classroom. Once we collected that and I sorted out by grade level, the package will come back to Public Works. Donna, Rob, and the commissioner then will judge it according to the classroom, the package, and will distribute the essay to the reader, judge, not me. And we will then work with the teacher and the principal to get invitation sent out to the school by November 12. And I will give them at this 10 days to turn around for the parents and the students to come to City Hall on November 21st. Any question?
I did. Oh, visited schools. You were looking for commissioners to go to school?
Yes. You are willing to go and if the school teacher are asking for help. In the past, when we first started this, it was very new with the Queen City Commission and the recycle poster contest. So Ms. Ed Haber and I went to school and we do a little slide presentation. We have calling books for the schoolchildren. Again, it's only by invitation by school principal and by individual school classroom. And that's, we always have an invitation announcement in our contest out there and it's up for them to schedule a date with us. And if it is, then I will probably need help from the commissioner. And we don't know that until information package I email out next Monday. So it's pretty much the school visits on standby.
Okay. Because if you need that, I'll help.
Yeah, thank you.
If you, there's enough time there to get this all together by...
We, I would, I would always honor saying that the time block has always been the same. We send this out right after county fair and when we do it right at the November award date. The trick is we wanted to do it before December. That's when all the students are thinking about Christmas and the holiday and we can't complete it. Their attention is on.
And the winners will get a gift certificate that helps buy Christmas. That's great.
Actually, yes. I think the student, the parents enjoy a little gift certificate that the student has. And it's a privilege for the student that participates. And I love seeing all the little children coming here to the City Hall because they get to meet the commissioner. Some of them have never been to the City Hall and sometimes we invited our mayor and city council to come here. So they love, they love shaking hands with the adult.
I guess my next question is either Donna or Donna. We, we budgeted this in our, in our budgets, didn't we? I see we have like $975 is what it cost to slash gear at the league.
Yes, sir. It's in our budget. I think we actually spent about $1,000 last year. And just to kind of echo Nina's comments, this is always the best commission meeting of the year when we award this to all these kids.
Oh, I love it.
What we're doing here.
It's your feel-good meeting of the year. So I think what Nina would like is two volunteers for any school visits. And again, those would be at the discretion of a principal or a classroom teacher. Two volunteers from the commission to judge posters and two volunteers to judge the essays. So.
Yeah.
It's kind of a long, honored tradition.
I'd volunteer for that.
Yeah. I'll, I'll help with essays or poster, you know?
I'll help.
Yeah.
I'll help with essays.
I cannot help going to classroom. I would love to buy you.
So I got Commissioner Bowman as the volunteer for the school visits. Anybody else volunteer for the school visits?
I can't. I work.
I'll go school visits.
Unless you want to point to the commissioner who's not here. So it's a long, honored tradition of that.
If you weren't here, we volunteered you.
Oh. No, I'll go to a school if I know which school to go to.
And I'm sorry. So I got Kathy and C for the school visits. C and Jennifer for the essays and who's?
No, posters.
Oh, posters, okay.
I'll do essay.
I'll do essay.
Essays are fun. They're, they're really hard.
Do we have to count the words?
Oh, yeah. We have to count the words.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we need to do a motion whether we are going to do this this...
I'm sorry. We, we have one other item.
Yes. We have one comment that came late this afternoon by email. One of our sixth grade teacher who had participated in the essay contest in the past six, seven years. She has over four classroom of 400 students. She's a strong participant. She would like the opportunity for her student this year to do the acronym recycling poem. And I would ask for your permission to allow for sixth grade to do that one. So in your package there, you have Donna. Gonna move out?
Nina, you lost me.
I don't think this is...
They, they want to do what, Nina? A poem?
A verse. Is it? Kind of mindless song.
I wanted to go fast.
I love fast. I don't know. I broke it.
No, but the poem, they want to recite it or, or do poems?
They want to do a different.
They want to do a poem, sixth grader.
So compose poem.
Instead of essay.
So we have three grade level, sixth grader, seventh grader, eighth grader. Right now the sixth grade teacher choose before the recycling poem that was previously given to seventh grader. And I would encourage us to award her her choice since she has over 400 students participating.
She what?
Yes, 400 students, over 400 students participating. They should like to have the...
She'd like to have a poem. And that means less reading for you on essay.
We did, we did the poem once before where he's the first letter of the word recycle.
And that was for, that was for seventh grader. Now the sixth grader won it. I think, I think we'll grant that wish if the commissioner consider.
Fine by me.
Fine by me.
Fine by me.
Thank you.
Now, Nina, then, then judging will be doing posters or, excuse me, essays and poems?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Got it.
That will be out on November 5th.
Right, right. Okay. Got it.
Sounds like it's about 400 poems. You have two people reading.
Yeah. Even my wife would read them. New school teacher came out and she's the composition and spelling, which is something we do catch up on. And that leaves me out completely. Do we need to do a motion on whether we are actually going to do this or not or?
Yes, sir. If you could make a motion to, we would proceed with the contest with an award date of November, November 21st.
I'll make that motion and I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. We do the essay and poster contest again this year. Any further... If not, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And on any opposed, motion carried.
I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, could we get another motion just saying that the commission approves that budget of $1,000 for this contest?
Yes.
Yes. I'll make a motion that we have a budget of $1,000.
I second that.
Motion made and seconded. The budget of $1,000, the essay and poster contest. Any further discussion? If not, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed, motion carried. All right. Item D.
Oh, you.
Disposition of paper for recycling. Discussion in regards to the disposition of paper for recycling and the information the Commissioner Kawaye received from the Cascade Paper.
So I met with, not met, but on the phone, spoke with...
Turn your mic off.
Oh. I'm green. Okay. So I met with the new plant manager, Brian and the second, I forgot his last name, out at Cascades. And I was wanting to look into that to see what our possibilities were. Instead of, you know, paying to get rid of it, possibly could it just be an even thing or maybe we make money by giving them paper? Because I know that they work with recycled. And I found out that they started, their whole company started with working with recycling. They're very pro-recycling. But because of them being a food safe facility, which just began recently, they have some very strict rules of what kind, levels of what kind of things they can take. So Cascades makes paper towels, toilet paper, and napkins. And they recycle everything that's waste within their plants. And then they use recycled materials to make those materials also. And they, what Brian explained to me is it's a very, unlike how we're having to pay to get rid of it or like you said, we just, now we've got a cleaner product and we're actually making some money. They have a very high level because it's food safe. And that means that they know where the trees were cut down, what they were made into, what the plants were, and then when it come, and then it was in a food safe facility, and then it comes back to a food safe facility. So they have, so they have a really high level that they get paid for and pay for that amount because of the standards of cleanliness and we don't meet that. So, and, you know, we'd also need the machinery to compact it and save it and all that stuff.
Well, thanks for checking it out at least.
Thank you for the information.
So those are... And I'd love for us to be able to find, you know, learn more about, you know, what our local, what our other options are, you know, things that we can make out of the paper or, you know, whether we can mix it in like when we have the solid waste, can that be mixed in? Like, you know, what are our other options so that we are not paying to get rid of it, but we're actually getting something out of it? So that's all.
Thank you.
Anything further? That brings us to item six. Announcements by commission members. Limited to announcements, availability for attendance at conferences and seminars. Request for agenda items for future meetings. Commissioner Kawaye?
I just ask that everyone, since we are concerned with recycling and the planet, that we put some mental attention towards taking care of our planet, of the rains that are needed in the rainforest in Siberia and Indonesia and up above Russia. I'm forgetting the word. But there's, there's a lot Siberia. Thank you. A lot of huge forest fires. So just keeping thoughts on the planet and thinking rain. Rain helps. And, you know, the change in education.
Commissioner Bowman?
I have nothing.
The only thing I, I have was, I would like to share something that happened at the fair to those that weren't there. It was one of those awe moments. Maybe you could say it was one of those what the heck is happening? It was on Thursday morning. The schoolchildren had just finished coming through and things were starting to settle down a little bit. And directly across the aisle from the Queen City Commission booth, there was a booth that was a business where they were teaching the keyboard and teaching percussion. And the kids loved to come in and beat on the drums. Well, this mother came in with her child, probably... Well, this mother came in with her child, probably eight to 10 years old, something.
Why, when you think it was that old?
Maybe not, I don't know. And, uh, he sat down at the drums.
Oh, oh, okay.
And she sat down at the piano. And he started just beating on the drums like kids do. And the, uh, instructor for percussion, he sort of showed the child how to get a little beat going. And, uh, and they talked for maybe, you know, three or four minutes, may, maybe, maybe even 10 minutes. And, uh, while he was doing that, this mother, she was pianist. And she was playing a nice, nice, uh, piece of music that could have been background music from a movie or something, I don't know. But at any rate, um, in a little bit, the little boy started with this, this thump, 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 thump beat on the drum. And this mother started with her right hand playing the Battle Hymn of the Republic, keeping in bad time with his beat. And the fellow that did the percussion, he was sitting in the back where you couldn't see him and he had the little snare drum. And he started with a rap. And then the mother brought in the left hand and started playing. And this whole thing got to, I mean, it was something to really behold. Everything in, in, in the south wing of the room just shut down and stopped and went quiet and, uh...
And they just listened?
Yeah, and they just listened. And when it was over with, I mean, people came from the main room and were standing blocking the whole doorway from the main room into the south wing and listened to this, this music. The, the woman was excellent on the piano. And then with this little boy, and as he changed, you know, he got tired, he changed his beat, she would change the rhythm on the, on the piano. Uh, I mean, it was all done, everybody just... Sorry that everybody here missed it.
It, it, it was worth listening.
It was, it was, yeah. It was just one of those wow.
Yes.
Uh, other than that, that's all I have.